Right, I see.
I'm gonna go ahead and open this so we can fill because he's, I think he's, he is waiting, right?
I don't have him yet.
Okay, I'll open it and then we'll wait. We're gonna open up the town away select board meeting, all members are present with the exception of Lloyd Erlin. It's July sixteenth, twenty twenty four, it's uh near about six P M. With the board's agreement, do we wanna skip the pledge? And go right and try to get right into this executive session?
Yeah.
You could do it after.
Okay, we'll defer it. I get, we could uh any conflicts of interest in the upcoming agenda from board members that they foresee? Okay.
He's on, so I'm gonna let him in.
Okay, so I want, well. I'm gonna present the question that you asked me to the board, Ken. Um inquired about his participation in the executive session. My under the premise that he's been appointed and is the chair and he's been appointed as the liaison for this subject matter. I don't have experience with that, and I'm trying to think of any experience that I have had with someone outside of the select board being present in an executive session. Uh, we might.
Other than the town.
Right, so the town manager, I mean, I think his case is such that's valid, however, I wanna double check. Legality.
Good.
And I think we just need to ask the lawyer whether it's number one, if it's okay, but also number two. Do we still preserve attorney client privilege? If we have Ken, I'm for sure all the officers and his manager have whatever we discuss that's privileged information. I'm not so sure if we have, and it may, and it may, he may be a town official that falls under the umbrella of attorney client privilege. And also there may be an executive session problem, but I think we need to ask the lawyer.
That's what I was thinking.
And
Is on.
And uh it's it's yeah, but it's you on motion yet or?
Oh yeah, so why don't we uh? Do you think we can ask Phil though before we enter executive session, correct?
Yeah, right now.
Phil, can you hear us? This is Trent Emery speaking.
Yeah, hi Trent, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I don't, yeah, we can, thanks, uh, thanks for joining us tonight. Uh, we had a, a brief question before we get enter into executive session about uh, Ken Spalding is present and he was inquiring about his participation in the executive session. And he, uh, I just don't have experience with that and I'm, I'm questioning uh if, if it's appropriate and legal.
Sure, yeah, the, the board does have the authority to bring members into an executive session who are relevant to the discussion. This case, I believe Ken is, was a member of or the chair of the committee that reviewed
Yes.
this matter.
Um, yes.
So it's entirely appropriate, he's just, you know, he's bound by the executive session, it's confidential once we're in there, so there's no discussion afterwards outside of executive session. If you'd like to have a join.
Okay.
Were, were you on the line when I was asking about attorney client privilege?
Yes, I was, and to the extent
Does the privilege extend again?
Yeah, is, is, is he still a member of the committee? The town's committee, yeah, so uh, we represent the town itself and that includes all of its bodies, so um, yes.
Okay, uh does the board, dude, does the board wanna agree upon this or take action on, on accepting Ken? How would we like to proceed on that or are there concerns?
I have concerns.
No, I think it's fine.
Okay. Okay, are we in agreement?
Mm-hmm. When we make the motion to go into executive session though, do we have to include in that motion that is present?
Yeah.
We're getting nods.
Yeah, you could do that.
Okay.
You ready for motion?
Yes, yep.
I move the board on our executive session pursuant to one main revised statute, section four oh five sixty to consult with legal counsel about the town's rights and responsibilities regarding the property commonly referred to as the Hundred Acre Woods. Uh, also I moved that, uh, that we expand the attendance in executive session to include Ken Spalding. Who is the chairman of the conservation committee?
I'm, I'm the lead on the conservation.
Oh, he's a member of the conservation commission.
A member of the conservation commission and the lead steward.
Okay. That's my motion.
Okay.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, all right.
Two minutes close the door. There's a lot of information on the door. And I haven't, I haven't heard it lately, it looks very hard to figure.
Are we all online all that? Hi, welcome everybody, uh, we've already opened the meeting, um, but we are gonna the board chose to wait to do the pledge, so we're gonna do the pledge right now and then we'll get into the agenda. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, meeting minutes. Uh, do we have a?
I have an explanation.
That's right, we had a question about that, thanks, yeah, Bryce.
Uh, so I reached up to MMA and um, all you guys are approving are those minutes into record, you're not necessarily approving the minutes themselves. So it's totally acceptable for anybody, even if you're not, you weren't present at the meeting.
Oh, interesting.
You're saying you're accepting them and approving them for record.
Okay, it's been almost nine years of not doing it that way. Helpful, good, good email.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so is there a motion to approve uh June eighteenth and July second, can we do that simultaneously, I would think for?
Motion to approve.
Would sure, yeah, we can take them separately, absolutely.
Motion to approve the select word meeting minutes for June eighteen, twenty twenty four. Second.
All in favor? Okay, uh second, uh, the July second meeting.
Need to approve the select word meeting units for July second, three twenty four.
Uh, discussion.
Yeah, I think we missed a little bit around the concerns on the financial operations, uh, there were a couple of things that were gonna happen relative to the Rexana um, conversations with the Rexana board. Um, was, uh, we're gonna see Eric and Marianne conversation and then there was also uh, relative to responsibilities at group base one, so we had some, we made decisions and took actions, but we're not recording.
So that'd be uh, new business H?
Yep. We wanted to do some research.
Yep. Uh, can we include that information and pass these minutes with those amendments? Or with those changes?
Yeah.
And they were specifically, can you, do you have them specifically?
Um.
Or close to?
It was around the um
I mean, I recall it was
Yeah.
It was
Right.
Uh, it was around looking at the data costs, the data points.
Okay.
Where the town accounts are commingled with the Rexana and also with some other books that you do the accounting for and looking at Bryce.
Yeah, right.
So would it be appropriate to say move to approve these with the addition of the information regarding um
looking Research, yes, around some of the
Would you rather table it, I wonder, unless we have it recorded, we could get it word for word and then you can improve it then.
I don't, yeah.
They're all, the things are all recorded now.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to table the discussion on approval of the July second meeting minutes pending uh Bryce's consultation with Rick.
Seconded.
All in favor, or all, all, any discussion, all in favor? All right, I assume we had the discussion, my, my apologies. Okay, thanks, uh, warrants.
Move, we consider approving accounts payable number two, an amount of two hundred and forty seven thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty four cents. Second.
Uh, discussion.
That warrant included the first uh R S U number thirty, we paid for two hundred thirty two thousand, nine hundred fifteen dollars and forty five cents.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Uh, move we uh approve payroll number three in the amount of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety one dollars and three cents.
There a second?
Second.
Discussion.
That's typical payroll.
Okay, all in favor? Great. Uh, consider the mill rate, uh, Rob did please, hey Rob.
How are you guys?
Good.
Whoever doesn't know me, I'm Ron, we'll see your assessment agent. The biggest thing for tonight I wanted to bring up that we're starting the final phase of the townwide revaluation. So we had put together a mill rate calculation sheet for, for you guys. Um, and that is the most, that is the budget for the year. And that is the um, the new total taxable value. So to redo this in, in a mock situation where now that we've got the new budgets, new numbers, we then set out and noticed every taxpayer given them just a little snippet of all the revaluations complete, um, an opportunity to come in and speak with me and my, and my guys at the town office is gonna be that first full week of August. Um, and then when the call, all the stick was about that, but the idea is the bottom of this notice is gonna have the new value and the new tax based on the mill rate that we have. Um, but what you'll see on that mill rate that's different and why it's not discussing the overlay yet is we set a rate with the overlay is fairly significant, if you look at the bottom of that page, the overlay is, is eighty seven thousand dollars and normally it's in the thirty thousands. The idea is that people come in and meet with us for those hearings, there'll be things that we'll concede, there'll be some values that we will be changing and whatever value we change will just eat away at that overlay. So at the end of, at the end of the set of meetings, we'll have, we'll be able to use that same mill rate, maybe a little less. So it's just the one final step, so um will be the, I think it's fifth through the eighth, Monday through Thursday, August fifth through August eighth. And we'll, Bryce and I decided we'll do it later at the town office. Uh, the last set of revaluation hearings we did back in oh five, we did there, there'll be enough room there for that. Go through that process, we keep up with cleaning things up and the only thing we wanna talk about is after those hearings are done, by that Friday we should be done and we can set a normal commitment like we do. I guess the timing of the normal select miss meeting would mean that we wouldn't be setting until the twentieth of August. So there's a way that we could come in and have it, especially in this, you do this as your assessors app, not your select ones app. So if we could have a, a quick assessment meeting on the off week, just picking up to go over the view of the changes from the hearings and what the new overlays choices could be, we picked no rating, start the process.
Can you uh help me understand, is that, am I looking at the, at the bottom of the page, this, the zero point zero eleven point nine, is that?
Last year, that's the projected mill rate.
That's the projected mill rate. So forgive my question, that in turn turns it like the mill rate then is eleven point nine?
Eleven point nine.
Understood, okay.
And, and that's down from twenty point six.
Sure.
Because our value, our values all, we, the total value, the total value of the town basically doubled.
Sure.
Which makes sense, the only, the only sticky point here that we just gotta be really aware of, just just staying it out there, this budget, when you look at all the line, if you look at line item fifteen net to be raised to local property tax, four point five, seven million. Hmm, that's up seven hundred thousand dollars over last year. County is up seventy five thousand, municipals up to three seventy nine, schools up two oh five. That's significant increase. Well, I'm working about, we work in various towns and we're seeing increases like that, that I know we had a si- special situation for the extra money for the roads, the roads that were getting deferred maintenance on them. And then the other revenues are about, the revenues online twelve and thirteen reduced the tax burden locally. And that's, it's nine percent lower, not that big a deal, but the biggest thing is the amount of money will be asked from the taxpayers this year is eighteen percent more than last year. Now, everybody's gonna get a notice, we're gonna have a chance to talk about this, so that would be the first thing we'll explain to everybody, here's your new value. But it also comes with an eighteen percent tax, so everybody. The other part that is very untimely are the people who was under the stabilization program last year, where they froze their twenty two taxes. That was a seven and a half percent increase last year, this twenty five percent increase. So that means hypothetically, if the town doubled the value if somebody's individual value doubles as well, so it's going up with the mean they're gonna see a twenty five percent increase in the tax that's been stabilized, or eighteen, if they have, people who see their, their individual value go up more than two times, it's gonna be a bigger increase in that.
That's helpful, thanks for summarizing that up, yeah. Uh, other questions from the board, comments? So I, Henry.
You wanna have a special meeting, is that what I understand?
Well, for timing wise, if you guys can.
And I would, uh, remind, say that one more time, that, that before, prior to what date?
It'd be the second week of, uh, of the cause our first meeting would be August sixth, which is the second full week of August, so that makes, that would be the third the week of the twelfth, so we're looking for a quick meeting.
And that would be the special meeting.
Be correct.
Just to step special meeting called for the purpose of setting this mill rate.
I don't know how your first, what, what your first half tax due date is, is it a hard date? Or is it so many days after the bills go out?
It's always been October.
Oh, yes, I mean, the board can't wait till the twentieth if, if they want, but just if that, we'll be, we'll be finishing our work and it'll be ten or twelve days before we can commit. It's a tack, it's a cash flow thing. If you guys are okay with it, we'll just do it on the twentieth, but I offer it up.
When, when's, when's our next meeting?
August sixth.
The August sixth.
So we have Oh, right, it's a five weeks, that's right, this is
So one of the points is that the earlier that we have the meeting which would be basically a week, the earlier you'd be able to get information out.
Get the tax bills out.
Right.
Get the tax bills out. Um.
So we probably should have a special town meeting based on the conversation at last meeting, though cash flow, special select. So excuse me, yes, that's what I meant, yeah, yeah, that's what I did.
Yeah, with that.
And that's the only thing that we consider, so it should be quick.
Right, it's, there's Just get together, discuss this.
Um, we'll have, usually we always do three mill rate scenarios. And you guys pick it, everything we there, we can sign it that night, and we get our following, so.
So what? I don't have my calendar in front of me.
Tuesday is the thirteen, but I don't
Tuesday the thirteen? Well, I don't have any day of these, but yeah, stick with Tuesday.
Yeah.
Don't forget.
The next thing, from us, we're being, again every taxpayer will receive a notice sometime at the end of next week with instructions on what's going on, so.
Uh, it's board wanna set a date, Tuesday, the
Won't be associated conflict for me, but
Oh.
Break that conflict.
Well, I don't know the date, but Tuesday the what?
Tuesday the thirteenth, it's a Tuesday.
August thirteenth.
I'll be flexible, but it, it is nice if it's on Tuesdays, right?
I, yeah.
I mean, do it earlier during the day if you want, later during the day or the morning, whenever, whatever time best, the board, we can work around that part.
Not through a different time, I can do this time. Ethan's, so Tuesday at six thirty.
Good.
Okay, August thirteenth. All right, thank you very much, awesome, thanks, that's great. Uh, okay. For both business, uh, review hiring and interviewing advisory committee. So Bryce.
I wasn't sure what, if you were looking for members or I, I had found what I presumed to be the charge that was sent out, so I didn't know.
Yes, yeah, that, that's relevant.
And the packet.
Yep.
Oh, is that in there?
I think the pressing issues are three select board members that are represented now, so therefore, uh, we need to uh, make adjustments to that because then we're having a quorum. So I am going, I would like to resign or remove myself from that committee. Unless
I think that's a, I think that's fair enough.
Cause Hazel, Marianne will be re- representing the select board.
Okay.
Is that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that that's the first question on that committee or for, for that agenda item. Um just people wanna review the charge briefly based on, and I, I, I think the charge is still relevant.
I think so, I'm looking for it.
Uh, it should be on the backside of the municipal.
It should be the next thing, the packet.
Right, it's the next, oh, got it, okay, I was looking at the town, I'm going to need that one, isn't it?
So it's still relevant, but can we actually can we actually execute the screening and interviewing before the um, ordinance is enacted?
Yeah.
Are you asking, should the committee be the ones?
I think the committee can do some of its work, but I don't think we can actually execute on
Yeah, I, I
The high rate part.
I thought that that would come back to the board.
I think, are you asking about the, the adoption of the stat- statute and that relationship to this? So a question, question being based on our review, because we adopted the state statute, the town did. The, the state statute as related to the town manager plan, Hazel's I don't wanna you're, you're asking, is the committee?
I'm asking, it's not just the committee, are we able to actually interview and hire before the statute is conducted?
Well, could you not, based on the, that's a good question, my, my my thought on that would be because the town voted to pass it therefore it goes, it's, it's, it becomes the uh, becomes the the statute or the, the ordinance that we go by, so my thought would be, my thought would be, yes, you would pursue interviewing, understanding that these are the qualifications and the expectations for job description, right?
So what was the legal advice, I wasn't at town meeting, what was the legal advice relative to the one year pause?
The, the legal advice for the one year pa- you mean, as it related to the hiring process or?
As it related to the state statute?
I think that it was, if I may.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I think that are the, the um um, information we were given was that we could go ahead and hire making sure that the candidates understood that are uh, that we had adopted a, a, a new statute that would come into effect as of next year. So it's just fine to hire, um, as long as that person knew what, what was changing. Which would be probably to their advantage and what they prefer anyway.
Yeah, I don't necessarily, I don't, I don't, I didn't, it was relative to the new select board positions.
Well, there, there was a concern about that. But I think in terms of the, in terms of the town manager position, uh, we were, it was indicated that we could just go ahead anyway and hire someone um with the understanding that we had adopted a new statute that would come into effect.
Yeah, Henry, yes.
I think you're gonna hire somebody and the deal is uh, their job description changes on whatever the date of the next town meeting is.
Right. And they, as long as they're aware of that.
Yeah, and, and you should you should base your hiring decisions on qualifications necessary to perform that new job.
Right.
But their duties are, that their initial duties are going to be different than their duties after the next town meeting.
Right.
At least I think that's it.
I think that's what I remember as well. And that, and that we would certainly think that we wanted to wait until we, we had finally accepted the new statute so we knew that we had um, town approval to go ahead with that job description.
But I wanted to comment, I think you, I, I, back to your question around legal advice, Hazel. I don't think we were, if I, I, I just wanna make sure I understand your question, I don't think it was advised to delay the uh ordinance, that's the way the statute is, is written. That when you adopt that, when you adopt the town manager plan, you have, you, it goes into effect at your next town meeting.
Well, the, yeah, the, the the legislative action, the town meeting action, adopting it has to be at least ninety days before the town meeting that goes into effect.
Right.
And so rather than have a special town meeting ninety days before June, we just did it in this one, which is a year ahead of time, more than ninety days.
I don't know if that was a question, I, I was, I was trying to answer your question, but I don't know specifically.
It's still not clear what the pause for a year is.
That's what I'm trying to answer, right, that's in the statute.
The pause for a year is that the law that says what it means to have a town meeting, select board, town manager, form of government which we say we have, but I don't think we do, like, right, registered. The, the law that says what that means provides that before you can put that into effect, the town has to adopt it at a town meeting at least ninety days before the town meeting that goes into effect. And when that all came up, we were within ninety days of the, well, we weren't within ninety days, we were too close to the town meeting of this year to get that done. Is what I recall, as, as a spectator.
Correct. So it wasn't, it wasn't a added pause under some sort of legal advisement, it was how the statute's written for adopting this town manager plan.
Yeah.
Is that?
There was, uh, there was some discussion regarding um, people running for select because um if we had adopted it if there was a question about whether we were adopting it for this year uh, as of this town meeting then people, and when it hadn't been adopted by vote yet, then people running for the select board at this point would be running uh, there would be a question as to exactly what their job description was based on the statute, and it couldn't be determined until town meeting because we didn't know how the vote would cut. So if you were running for the position So if you were running for the position, you wouldn't exactly know the position you were running for. Does that make any sense? Did I explain that? Yes, I kind of recall, so it's still true, although. Well, you know, in your case, you know what your job description is this year, and when you were running.
And people that are running next year will know, because they know for sure that it, what goes into effect when they take office.
Right. The fact that it's a three-year term, kind of.
Well, and even do people, whoever, whoever, if if somebody new comes on the next year, or whatever terms are expiring. They know what the deal is, because it's already been voted on by the town and goes into effect. Last year, that wasn't the case, because maybe the town would approve it, maybe it would not approve it. Uh, right, I I don't know if that meant a whole lot, to tell you the truth.
I agree with you, but I think the legal. There, so. We opted to do it this way.
Other comments, questions, concerns about the charge?
No.
All right.
This needs to, uh, set some.
Yeah, so. Maybe, maybe you're co-chairing now. I was a co-chair.
Yes.
No, you'll have to sort that out at your next meeting, from John Arco, make the force call, I should say. Thank you.
Uh, cheers, I I know, it's just you just.
Yeah.
And she was there before, just not as a select.
Yeah, see it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, good. Oh, right, we're, uh, reviewing and considering the updated select board bylaws, there were some changes that were. Discussed last week. And, uh. We have a copy of those changes.
It was okay with the exception of one clarification on, uh. It's on page seventeen of the minutes, page six of the bylaws in red, under general items. Uh, by the closing business Wednesday, the week before the scheduled meeting, shouldn't that read Wednesday, a week? The Wednesday before the scheduled meeting, so it doesn't appear that it's. A week before the week. Well, the Wednesday before the next Tuesday is in the week before that Tuesday, so it's in the Wednesday in the week before. Does it have add value to have the week before, or can we just say by Wednesday before the scheduled meeting? That is absolutely clear.
The Wednesday for the next scheduled meeting is, is.
It's fine.
It's fine for me.
Yeah, that's fine too.
Because.
It's, they're both the same thing. So either one.
Well, the Wednesday without the week, uh, would be different in our situation like next week, because there's two Wednesdays. In advance of our next board meeting, so the.
The Wednesday the week before the, yeah, but the Wednesday the week before, the Wednesday the week before the board meeting.
Clarify.
Is the Wednesday before the board's. Oh, okay, the Wednesday next, oh, you're absolutely right, okay, the Wednesday next before. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you just said the Wednesday before.
I think if you strike the week, it's totally clear that it's the Wednesday.
But I think, I think Trent's right, because there's more than one Wednesday before. Every time we do it, there's more than one Wednesday before, if there's two weeks, there's two Wednesdays before.
That's what, what my point is.
Next time, there'll be three Wednesdays before.
I had a question.
How many Wednesdays do you need?
So are striking it or not?
Strike the words, the week is my recommendation. And then you're consistent with all of the language, the Friday before, the Wednesday before. I think you're right about the consistency, yeah, I think it all means sense. Let's do it.
Sounds good, let's do that.
In every other case, it's just as when, the Wednesday before, and we've dropped out the week.
There was a point that I. Uh, wanted to bring up, and may, it may not need changes, but I wanted to bring it up as a point of. Where can I find it? It had to do with documents being brought to the board, I don't know. Who's fluent here, or memorized which paragraph that might be.
I was just looking at it, uh, I think that it is.
It's on page five, right?
Page five.
This is one of those blinds, and we don't spend too much time on it, but I just wanted to address it, because it's here, it's written in the policy. But we never, I shouldn't say never, often the case. There are accepted materials, either brought through the public, brought through others that are dropped off on this table, and I just want to address that in the sense of. Should this be here, why is this here, and are we going to adhere to this? Because, again, through the last eight years, there's been countless times where X walks in, hands out. Said document.
So say sometimes those things are of value, um. If we change the word will to may not, will not to may not, does that give us some flexibility, Henry? Well, there. Bylaws are waivable anytime by board action, and so if somebody wants to bring you something. Then we just have to say, yes, do we want to take this or not, and if we want, if somebody says, here's something I want to bring you, the, and the, and the bylaws say. That's a no-no, the deal would be, we'll have a motion to waive the bylaws and acceptance, and the majority can say yes or no. I believe that's.
Okay.
What what would, how it would normally work.
I I I like the way this is written, because if we. Accept them, if we only accept them the Wednesday before, then they go into the public record. Um, where somebody dropped a couple of things up on the desk, they may not. Make it in there, and so there's, it's more questions.
So you you can always choose to accept materials, even though it says, even though it says not. Excuse me, Trent, one of the things that we passed, and I I think we said this, and and I, and this, this is my bad, because I. I looked at this before and I didn't, I didn't pass it. Back on page four, where the discussions, the comments will be limited to three to five minutes, I thought we were just gonna say that.
Oh, that's true.
Okay, so if you could. Cross out the two five minutes per person, which is three minutes.
Paragraph is that.
It's in, it's on section five, the second paragraph, starts out citizens will be allowed to comment. And just line through the two five minutes. And put the, put the new guys on the signature box.
They are on the one.
Which paragraph is that in? First paragraph in section five?
Yeah, it was in the second paragraph in section five that starts out citizens will be allowed.
The small one in between, they're written out in words, that's why I couldn't.
Oh, got it, I found it, thank you, I suppose it's. We're gonna get a good copy too, probably not that important.
Um, anything further on select board bylaws? Uh, would the board like to adopt with the amendments from last week and the most. Update amendments, or do we want to wait one more round to see it?
I move, we go ahead and adopt them, and if we can sign them next week, after he makes the changes.
Okay.
I second that.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, great, thanks. Uh, let's see, uh, review and consider town appointments. I know we've.
Kathy and I put some work in on this to get it cleaned up, and you'll see there's a couple vacancies, so it's. Up to date.
Can you point us to the vacancies?
Uh, Board of Appeals is really the crucial one. There's a vacancy that runs out June thirty point twenty-six and June thirty point twenty-seven. We have a couple candidates, but we'd get to confirm. And that was because Henry was chair, and there was another member who did not want to. Withdraw, actually.
His term was up, and he didn't want to continue.
Okay.
Yeah, correct.
How do we typically go about billing these?
That's my question.
I know how I got on the board, Aaron, Aaron went around and asked people if they could help him out, and if he said yes. Then you got on the board. Now, when, when I was, when I was still chairman, I knew these were coming up, so I. Checked around for possibilities. And you, if you ever have, we never had, haven't had a deal yet, but if you have one, I think you need a lawyer. Uh, it was suggested to me by several people to contact Laura Briggs. Who I don't know personally, but she was on the appeals board before, she's a lawyer and she was the chairman before. I called her and she reluctantly said she would do it if we couldn't find anybody else. Uh, the other person I talked to about it was, was, uh, was M T Clark. And she said, sure, she might like to get involved and do that, but you would, you know, say we need to, uh, we need to contact both of those. And, uh, and 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 see if, if I didn't dream all that.
Does the Board of Appeals, I, I, I just. To Henry's point about how folks get on this board, would that have the same opportunity for. Applications like to do with other committees, or is that, I can't.
Well, I I've heard about the, the application process, but I asked. I asked the other day if there was a policy on that. And, uh, I didn't, wasn't able to find one.
No.
So i- i- if we want to take applications, we can sure do that. Uh, on these committees, other committees, you're kind of, like, if it's an advisory committee, you're kind of open-ended on who you can have on it. If you're taking applications for the planning board or Board of Appeals, there's, there's two issues. Number one, if you open it up for applications, then are you wanting to be able to challenge? Members at the end of their terms who want to continue, at least that's what I think, if you're gonna take applications, and my term is up, but I want to continue. Seems like the application process might be, you ought to take applications anyway, including me, and decide who stays on it. If if you don't want to do that for those two boards, I'd continue the way you have been doing it. It as a suggestion.
My, I gotta ask another question to Bryce and Kathy, my brain is probably a little bit scrambled, it's been super hot out. Don't, what do we, but on the, on the, on Tues- uh, on Tuesday of this election, uh, the most recent election. It was, it was, was it school committee, who do we vote for at the bottom down there?
That was school committee. Uh, the other school one that I'm.
Okay, so it's not, we never vote for the Board of Appeals. Right?
These are our point.
I've just, oh, maybe, maybe it was. Maybe Teresa's name, I don't know, she was on that committee anymore. Incorrectly, okay, thanks. Got it.
Yeah, the Board of Point, Board of Appeals and the Planning Board, we just need to, however we decide we want to do it.
Yep. Well, there's some good points raised, I'm, I'm open, the. Door knocking.
It just doesn't seem like we. Have that many people coming out of the woodwork, trying to. Be on these, that, that we would have four people who said, wait a minute, I really want to be on that board too. Or that committee. However, we started that process with the committees we put out there.
No.
Um. That worked well, I thought, except I think it could be tweaked.
Well, folks wanted to, um. I don't have a strong opinion on this, right now. Henry makes some good points.
There's no ordinances, bylaws, nothing written. But somewhere along the way, it's been established it was a three-year appointment for it? Oh, well, that, no, the the three-year appointment, the, the Board of Appeals is, there's a stat- there's an ordinance on, it's part of the zoning ordinance. And there's also a statute on the Board of Appeals, just like the planning board, but they don't say. What the process is for selecting the, uh, appointees.
Got it.
But the, the number in the years are in a, that's set for us.
My guess is that at this point, it doesn't. We don't have to complicate it anymore, if we find out that there are a lot of people in the future who are very interested. Perhaps we start that process up.
Yeah, I, I. I would suggest that with respect to the Board of Appeals. And maybe also debate an alternate on the planning board, that was expected those positions only, we table it. Throw the ball over to Bryce to check around, to find some candidates, and to have the town manager make some recommendations to us. As to who would be good candidates to fill those positions, and then we can act on.
Okay.
And all the others could be acted on tonight, if there's no other discussion on, as a suggestion.
I support that.
That's basically the way other roles are taken care of, um, in town office, in.
Okay.
More formal conclusions.
Same true for the Regional Solid Waste Committee vacancy? Did a recommendation from?
I don't think that that would come from us, do we have, would we normally have three people?
There was three. Spoke with the person's term was up, and they did not want to.
Okay, got it.
Are we required to have three?
From what I talked to Amy when she was on, she always said it was a board member and two other representatives. I can reach out to Eric Dyer and see if that's. Necessary. I think it's more so if one person can't go, that there's, you know, that there's more than one person going to all the meetings.
Let's ask Eric.
Yeah, my question.
I mean, it only meets four times a year.
Maybe some, uh. Defunct committees were.
There was a couple, their terms were up, as where we weren't.
Yeah.
Recent, where they were expired, you know, I think in the future, if the board wants to open those back up.
Yeah.
We'd have a process, but where they were expired, I just did not put them on.
Yep, that's great, I, it's fine, yeah. Okay, anything further on this from the board? Okay, uh, thanks Bryce, thanks Kathy.
So that, so to summarize, we're gonna wait for Bryce to get back to us with your suggestions.
Yeah. Great, uh, review the response, um. Uh, from our letters to the county commissioners, commissioners, uh, regarding the county built payment structure. I know board members had an opportunity to read that.
I can give you a synopsis.
Sure, go for it, Bryce.
From what I took from it was that, uh. It's a, it's the state that determines, state statute that determines, um, the practice that the county takes, it's not. Any sort of county voters getting together to vote to change that, is the interpretation from the, uh. Kennebec County Administrator, I can tell you, he, he did, um. Write back to let us know that the commissioner's proposed budget was under twenty percent, that it was that the. Kennebec County Budget Committee increased it to forty-four percent. So, like, he wanted to make that very evident in his letter back.
They call us.
Yeah, the, the, the statute says the county commissioner shall establish the date for payment of the tax. Which mean, means they could establish multiple dates if they wanted to, but this is a lost cause, I don't think. And pursuing it any, any further.
We do have a sixty-day window, so we'll pay at the second ward of October rather than September first. Help with us.
Yep. Sure, no question, all right. Uh, thanks, uh, update from, uh, Mobile Home Park, Recreational Vehicle Park, and Campground Ordinance Advisory Committee. So, um, that is open to, I'm not, I'm not sure who's chairing or leading, but.
I I am the chair of the committee, and, um, so I think Ted and I will probably kind of give you a little update. So, um, the committee was formed at your June fourth meeting, which was six weeks ago. Since that time, we have met six times, uh, we have another meeting scheduled for next week. And we have invited, um, Chip. And we have invited, um, Chip Stevens, CEO, to join us for that. Um, I haven't heard back from him yet, but we're hoping that, that is a Thursday, so we're hoping that he'll be able to join us and give us some input. So, throughout these six weeks, the committee has researched extensively. Um, I think I mentioned some of that when we were doing, asking for the extension of the ordinance, but we looked at campground ordinance and mobile sand park ordinance um, from at least over two thousand different communities. And we have really paid attention to getting into our own. Um, not just the campground ordinance, but the subdivision regulatory teams and our zoning ordinances. And really getting a good understanding of how that all works together. We have, um, spent a lot of time looking, looking for information related to campgrounds and different kinds of camping units that are being used today versus nineteen seventy-one when the ordinance was first developed. And we've also read a lot of articles about, you know, projections into the future so that we can try and not just update, but you know, get something that will cover us moving forward, cover the town moving forward. Um, we've also done a lot of reading and research through N A D E P and N A Department of Health and Human Services, which they are the umbrella that regulates campgrounds in the state. And also the main land use planning commission. So we've been digging into those. Uh, we really feel good about our draft, that we've gone through a couple of processes with our, our drafting. Um, we feel that we've taken, we've looked at all of the research. And I think when you see our finished product, which we, we don't have a draft given to tonight. But when you see that, we are not putting anything into this draft, into this proposal that, um, is, you know, outlandish and we're looking, we're looking at, you know, a lot of other standards and other communities and, and, um, oh, on top of just our Wayne land use ordinance, our zoning ordinance, we really have spent time reading and understanding the proper hints of plan and how this all fits with that as well. So those are pieces that we've spent a lot of time on.
So I, you know, we just talked briefly about work, work product and timing.
Yes.
So here's, here's what we, um, are, are on schedule, uh, to produce and to present for public consideration. Um, we, we have a substantially completed, um, proposed amended ordinance. That proposed amended ordinance will be, um, presented with attract changes uh, in, in track changes form, so that it shows the changes and modifications proposed in the amended ordinance as compared with the existing, um, uh, the existing ordinance. So people will be able to see exactly where the changes are. In addition to that, uh, the committee will, um, will, uh, present a report that, um, summarizes what, um, our work has been and how we went about our task. Uh, that explains, uh, the rationale behind the, uh, changes that we're proposing in the amended ordinance. So, so we expect to produce three pieces of work product. The amended ordinance, the comparison version, so that people can look at the two together. And then a report that provides a, a narrative, uh, explanation of our work and the reasons why we have recommended what we've recommended. So, um, Betsy's done a great job. I think we've gotten a lot done in a relatively short amount of time. Um, so that gets us to the question of timing. Our, our working assumption is that the select board's preference would be to have this question ready to be put to the voters if at all possible for the November election. So looking at the Perkins Thompson Bevel of June fourth and following the protocol that the town's attorney laid out, we see no reason why we're, we're having Chip, uh, hopefully we'll have a consultation with Chip at the end of next week, uh, to do a technical review of the changes that, um, that we have identified. But there's no reason we believe that we can't get, um, uh, the, the, the committee is, is required to apparently, uh, have a, a, a separate public hearing to solicit public input. We don't see any reason why we can't get that done sometime in the next couple of weeks, fifteen days. Um, it, it's a little unclear when the planning board, um, is meeting in August. But we'll have our work product essentially substantially complete by the end of this month, early August, which we can then forward to the planning board for its consideration in advance of its, whenever its August meeting is scheduled. And I think that will be a sufficient time for the planning board to notice and have at its next meeting, the public hearing that it's required to have. And then the final step is then to, to send it back to the select board with, uh, final recommendations, uh, for you guys. So if that all goes the way we think it can go, I do think it's realistic. Uh, it's a realistic bullet to shoot for having this, uh, ready to be passed on by town voters on election day.
So, because to that point, timing wise, where, is it, is it ninety days in advance for secret ballot or? Do you know?
Yeah.
Is it ninety?
No, it's, it's, it's sixty days. We have to send an order to, we gotta send an order to Kathy with the completed ordinance, uh, on our, uh, by September sixth.
September sixth.
And, uh, our last scheduled plan, or our last scheduled meeting before that is September third. The last scheduled planning board meeting before that is August first.
At the, at the last planning board meeting, they agreed in voting to have their meetings on third Thursday of the month, but I, I'm trying to get that clarified with Andy, um, because I don't, I don't know.
There has been some confusion. I wasn't at that meeting, but there's kind of a, yeah, I don't really know what's going on there.
Could I, could I just make this suggestion? I mean, we know that the planning board is going to have business pending before it in August. And it seems to me they can all get together and agree.
On a date.
On, on a date that allows sufficient notice for a public hearing to be done.
There isn't anything that says the planning board can't have a special meeting. So, so they could have, but if they want to have their regular meeting on this first, and if they agree, they could have a special meeting, uh, uh, later in the month. But are, you're, the only ordinance that you're changing is the campground ordinance.
Okay.
Uh, the one thing that I would note is that, uh, I guess the only, there has to be a public hearing before the vote, but that's after the matters referred to Kathy. So really then, you have a public hearing, but it's just an up or down on what already has been decided. There's no getting input to, to change things.
Right.
So, uh, I would, uh,
You're talking about the select board's public hearing.
Yes, the select board public hearing before, yes, yes, there has to be a public hearing ten days, I think, before the vote.
Yes.
But at that point in time, it's already written, so the only thing there is, are you for it or against it? It's not how you might want to change it.
Right.
So, uh, hopefully you all are getting, uh, public participation and input in your meetings.
Well, also our understanding is, we, we had, we have had, um, uh, at least one member of the public come to some of our meetings, so that's good. But, um, you know, obviously, the, the way I think we understand it, the purpose of us noticing a public hearing of our advisory committee and then having the planning board have a public hearing is for exactly that purpose, to have the public have an opportunity to come in, look at it, make suggestions, uh, yeah, uh, inquire about, you know, reasons why particular changes are being made, or to say that they don't agree with certain changes.
Now, I, you, you probably know this better than I do, Ted. I haven't looked at the amendment article of the campground ordinance, but is it one of the ones that gives the planning board up to four months to consider?
I think so.
Okay, so, so it's kind of, now they don't have to take four months, but this is a matter that if this is going to try to be put onto a November election, it has to have the planning board on board and, and committing to, to do it because they, uh, otherwise there's no way it's going to happen.
Right, and so you're absolutely right about that, Henry. And look, if it can't be done in November and the town has to go through the expense and time and burden of a, of a special, special election, special town meeting, then that's the way it will be. We just presumed that all other things being equal, it would be more efficient and preferable to have voting done on, uh, you know, the scheduled election day. And we know from past experience from the planning board, like for example, with the accessory dwelling unit, uh, amendments that were adopted. They had a public hearing, they, they reviewed them ahead of time, they had a black line, they voted on it the same night, so it can be done. It didn't take four months.
Yes, Ted.
Just to be clear, there is also the option of another extension. And that can happen. I'm not recommending it necessarily, but if it can't get done for the November ballot, you don't necessarily have to have a special topic.
Although that would probably necessitate a town meeting later on in that.
Well, the, yeah, the extension's done by the planning board. But, uh, and it does, the, the, I think the August, uh, I think the July seventh extension runs until January third. So, so you, so you have, so you have all of, you have after November fifth and all of December, uh, to do it without an extension.
What, um, conversation have you had with the planning board?
We haven't had any conversation, but.
Uh, any, anybody from the planning board, um, able to attend your meetings?
They're, they're, they are able to come to the meetings, but they have not come to the next. They are, yeah.
Have they been invited?
Well, through the pub, yeah, through the public notice, but I think part of what our, I mean, part, part of what we thought the process was, was that, you know, once we get to this point of having a draft, that you know, a final draft, then we do a presentation to, that we go to the planning board and, um, get their input at that point.
Well, so a couple of things. We're, we, we have a meeting already scheduled for next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
July.
Not, not this week.
July one, twenty fifth. So if we have a meeting scheduled for July twenty fifth, we, we can, we're, we'd be happy to have anybody from the planning board come who wants to come, so we'll invite all of them. I wonder, and I don't know, I'm not an expert on any of this. I'm not sure if that constitutes a meeting if they all show up.
Well, not if they, not if they're just in the audience. I don't believe it does.
Yeah, I just didn't know if you'd had any preliminary input from anybody from the planning.
We'll invite them all for next Thursday.
What time is that meeting and where is it?
Nine o'clock at the, well, it, right now it's at nine o'clock at the library. But if Chip responds and can make it that day at a different time, the time may change because we do want him to be able to come. So that's what we have tentatively set.
Bryce, maybe you could check with MMA and see if more than two of them show up and they participate in the meeting even as audience members, do we have an open meetings problem? I don't think you do if it's only two of them. But, but to ask them that too, that's an MMA question. Cause that, that was, that was a good sign.
I mean, I also understand the process that you just laid out. In the sense where, and I think we talked about that when we were forming the committee around, um, recognizing that the planning board has to review this and go through their process of review and hearing, so I, I'm not going to interfere with any stretch of the imagination on who you choose to invite, but first personally, I don't see it as obligatory at this stage because the land use planning ordinance automatically has to go through to the planning board. So, the communication with the planning board may be relevant to your draft, but I think the planning board, and I don't know if the planning board has the same bylaws such as the select board. I'm as, I'm assuming they can't act. Maybe they can't. I, I don't know if they can act independently anyhow. They might can only be able to act as residents or citizens. I, I'm not sure how that works. You know, for example, if they invited the select board.
If, if they invited select board and more than two of us show up and it's a select board invitation, then it's a select board meeting, I believe.
So I.
So, yeah, but, but as far as citizens, you can go to any meeting you want.
Understood. So I, I, I've, I see the process that you've laid out. I think the question that Henry's brought up and you're well aware of is, is, is a timing question, whether or not planning board can willing or wants or can coordinate their hearings in this, you know, this process in advance of September sixth.
Well, I guess they'll have to make that decision.
Correct, and they, and that's, and that's really, you're doing your part as the committee and you're feeling, you're fulfilling the charge that the select board brought forward. And then the process is going to lay out through a timing sequence through the planning board process.
And, and I think it's important, and I know, you know, particularly Mary and Trent moving through this too. It's that we're into the second hundred and eighty days, but the committee was only formed six weeks ago. And so it's not like we have had a hundred and eighty days and then some to, to even be a committee working on this. We've only had, we've only been established just six weeks ago. That's it. And so we are, you know, we are determined, we're working, um, feverishly through this. And we are determined to work through all the steps. You know, I, the details of the timing is so important and, um, we're doing the best we can from our end.
Yeah.
Look, we can't presume to speak for the planning board and what they're doing, this is going to be or how they're going to receive it. But, but I mean, just so that everybody's real clear on this. We didn't take the existing ordinance and rip it up and start, you know, with a, a blank piece of paper, let's write something new. We, we, the first thing we determined was, looks like the structure of this ordinance makes a lot of sense and will work. We, there are gaps in it, there are things that need to be clarified, there are things that need to be updated to reflect the fact that our, at least in our view, and you'll hear this in our report, the way people camped in nineteen seventy-one is a heck of a lot different than the way people camp today. And that needs to be regulated.
Sounds like you've got a lot of expertise.
Has there been, uh, I, I, I don't know if we formalized it in the charge or not. Has there been any opportunity to communicate with representatives from campgrounds in Wayne at this point, or at this stage?
So, um, we've, um, other members of the committee, we've actually been really good in terms of having people dividing waiver and doing things. So we've extended an invitation to, um, although like they're not technically in way, the Andrews Goggan Lake Campground, um, I think they're, they haven't heard that yet. And we did reach out to Andrews Goggan Boys Camp because one of the things we wanted to clarify was exactly where do they fit in.
Sure.
And preview of coming attractions.
Sure.
They are regulated differently and separately. They are not considered a campground and Wayne does not, um, uh, oversee or regulate boys, any, any summer camp, like as a campground.
Okay.
Private visits.
It's, it's a, it's actually, uh, under a separate license, a youth, you know, youth camp license.
Okay.
Given when you got discharged and the time ahead of the election that the ordinance has to be drafted, I think would be incredibly amazing if it gets done by November. So maybe it'll be later. I, I think it would be really a, a real feat to get it done by November fifth.
Yeah. Uh, is there anything further to report?
I don't think so. I do. I mean, we're, we're getting close to being able to publicize, you know, the draft, but I'm just not there, still tweaking.
Yeah, obviously, one of the reasons why we want to get input from the Code of Sportsman Officer is for technical review purposes.
Yeah.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions, comments from the board?
Thank you for your.
Yeah, thanks for the report. That's good. That's great. Thank you. Okay, uh, new business, uh, review the town of Wayne code of ethics. Uh, so, any board members want to comment or lead this off? I think maybe, is this, Henry, is this something you'd brought forward?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we, it needs to be changed. It's just that the, the actual the policy says that the chair of various boards will review the policy no less than annually with their members and utilize the policy to utilize it during meetings. And then it says the, uh, that we have to sign a notice annually that we've reviewed the policy and will abide by it. Unless somebody, I'm assuming people have read it, if, if there is discussion, then we should have it. If there's no discussion, I think all you have to do is All you have to do is remind us not to violate this and we sign this certification. I, I would, I would thank you. Doesn't, doesn't even need a vote unless somebody wants to change it. Policy.
I think we just review it and sign and also.
I think it's no whiskey or fights.
Even though they would happen to get number two, I mean, they're so small.
Is this, is this uh? Select point three, all members of various boards will act without bias toward any individual or issue. Is that? When serving, that would, to, kind of to your last conversation, a question, Henry, that you had brought up. That's when serving in the capacity in a meeting situation or that nature, right?
Yes, I, I, I think all this, all this has to do with people's activities in their capacity as, as. Town officials.
I had a, I had a question about.
I, I object to anything that says I can't have whiskey or fights on my own town.
Right. No, understood. I get that. I, I had a question, I had a question about like the intersection on. And I think we have a social media policy and I know the meeting's running a little bit longer here, um. And maybe we can follow up on this, the, you know, the, the intersection between uh. Being a public official and a private citizen when it comes to like social media and Facebook. And I, I think we have a social media policy and I don't know if that would be sort of a extension of this code of ethics to make sure they're. Congruent.
I think we do, but I don't, you know, board it, sir.
Yeah, I don't either. But generally speaking, I'm, I'm comfortable with the code of ethics. It's, it's interesting, maybe it was a couple of years ago or a little bit ago, I thought we had. Had some draft updates of this code of ethics, cause it related to. Um, and maybe, we maybe never followed through with it, cause I think it related to. Who's obliged to adhere to this, like for example, contractors. Uh. Other sort of appointees of the town, does, and I. Did you memorize this, Henry? Do you know this? Is it, address any, anything outside of committees and boards?
I don't think it does, cause it starts out that says appointees of the various boards of town service representatives of the local government and, and.
Okay.
The ministers, chair people of the various boards.
And what it, well, who it applies to in the second paragraph, that the Board of Selectmen, Budget Committee, Planning Board, Board of Appeals. As well as any other appointees or short-term groups such as comprehensive planning, land use ordinance committee, cemetery committee. It's basically all the people that are on this sheet that we talked about earlier.
Yeah.
So, so.
I didn't mean to be pejorative when I said you memorized it, I just know that.
But, but does this also mean that really we should put this in front of every committee that, that's what it says?
Uh, yeah, I don't know if we've been doing this or not. I, last year, I put it to the planning board, no, to the uh appeals board only because.
Right.
It was on your website.
Right.
Uh, and.
Yeah, another follow-up was how, cause I, I, I believe there was, there was some topic that came up somewhere as it related to code of ethics and the behavior of. Not behavior, of the, the expectations. Of like a, like a contractor and, you know, what role they have and do they have, are they obliged to sort of meet town codes of ethics?
I think if you wanna regulate contractor behavior, it needs to be in your contract.
Got it. No, no, they, okay. Yeah, I just, I, I think it was an unfinished topic for the board.
Now, the, the code of ethics and other uh conflict of interest regulations would, would bear on. Uh, the government officials' relations with contractors. But as far as the contractors, uh, uh, it needs to be in their contract, if we want them to do.
Okay. Okay, so uh, I think you already said, tonight, do we need to take any action on this?
If, if everybody's fine with it, there's a paper that's, that's on there that just needs to be signed by all of them, uh.
Okay.
Bryce can pass it down the table and we'll sign it.
Well, the other thing that we need to recognize is that with all of our committees and with all of these lists. We should really get these out to these groups of people and they should be doing this along with us as well as, you know. Um, Hazel and I should take it into our committee and have people look through it and sign it if they wanna participate.
So that'd be, you're the circulator.
Yeah, the last paragraph on there says the chair people of the various boards, I'll get in touch with.
Okay.
Circulate and have their members sign it.
Okay. Great. Okay, excellent. Uh, supplement, supplements and amendments, none, uh, town manager report.
All right. So my update on the Lad Rec operations, relationship with the town, I did talk to Adam and I do have. A copy of the minutes and they've had a ad hoc group started. Um, a subcommittee which will meet Wednesday, July twenty fourth. To outline the issues and then they'll report back to the board, their board, the Lad Rec Center board and. We'll follow up.
Is that a meeting that, that you and I should be at, or is this just within?
That I would, I think it would be nice to be there. I don't know if it needs an invitation.
Okay, but for me, it would have to be in the afternoon if I was to. Be able to.
It's set for six thirty, so that Wednesday, July twenty fourth, so I think it would be very helpful for them to have. The town come forward where the issue was brought up by the town.
Good.
So, that's where that stands. Uh, the community resiliency meeting, this Wesley Burhoe is kind of taking this on, which is great because I don't have the time. They're having a meeting here, you'll see that flyer and it's right on our website on the top. They're meeting tomorrow at the Lad Center at six P M. And this is to try to go after some grants that could fund projects that reduce energy use and costs and or make. Communities more resilient to severe weather and changing environments.
Okay.
That's going on tomorrow, so if anyone would make it, they definitely should. Uh, my financial report is kind of the, the last page of the packet, something that Bruce and the future, I think, will come. We're trying to drum up what that report will look like. This is just an expense report for transparency. I think it would be very beneficial to board members. When we're making decisions. And I can expand this more, but more so on maybe legal or just to see where we kind of stand so far in the year. It's obviously pretty. Boring right now with a lot of zeros because we're so early on in the fiscal year. There's so many report, reports we can uh provide, so. You know, board members wanna see some sort of financials, all they gotta do is ask and Bruce and I will um. Come forward, but I personally would like to see, in my opinion, um, with, to have Bruce come the second meeting of the month and just kind of give an update. Where he's saying, if there's any kind of big things that should be noted. And then I do have a couple of extra that I had, had come up late. I know this has been a thing in, um, in the past that it relates to the, you know, the financials. And this is in particular with the farmers market. They've asked and, um, you know. Is there any issue? How does the town feel about them having, you know, their own checkbook and doing their own finances? Cause again, right now, if they wanna go get something, they have to send a request to me and. It's really, as you can see, it's quite complicated on that expense report. If you go. To, uh, this isn't expanded enough, I could, but if it's not budgeted for, which we don't budget for farmers market, it shows up as a negative. And those, you know, then we have to do a whole nother rev, uh, expense revenue report to make sure we're taking in money and it's really just a lot of extra work. And I've spoken to a couple of other towns and those things are all completely separate from town business. Usually towns will, you know, provide, or towns would like to see that they provide their own insurance. We don't have to request that from them. Like that was a little bit of the, you know, the issue and I, I just, I'm, I'm probably, I'll follow up to make sure there's no insurance issues with that. I would think so, but it was an email that I got requested from the chair of that committee that. They would like to see, you know.
They'd like to see what?
That they would like to be able to, just a separation.
They, the, the chair, the farmers market committee.
Chair, yeah. Just cause it's a, it's very strenuous to get them a check if they need one.
Yeah. I wonder if that was, I, I, I can't, I don't. It was a long time ago, but I don't know if somehow that financial management was born out of the. Ordinance as it relates to the use of the public parks in Wayne. Not to say that it can't be updated or changed, but it may, but there may have been, or there may have been a relationship there. And I don't see any. Farmers market committee members here, but there may, there may have been. A reason for it in the beginning and I think. I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but it ha, it might have to do with functions and activities that are. Uh, permitted uses in the town park. And I think those are all sanctioned by the town. Anyhow, I just, that, that could be a layer of that relationship, but it might, it doesn't mean that we can't. Do the financial separation. We just want to make sure that. For example, X, Y, Z, whomever is not permitted to go down there and do X, Y, Z, whatever in terms of, you know, commercial activity. But I think the town sanctioned it. That's how I, but I don't, I don't have the ordinance, but it's been fifteen years since I've read that.
Be interesting to know how other towns have organized it and separated the money. Um, in terms of their ordinances.
I mean, but from what I've found is, it's. Again, you know, for example, in a town, they had said, you know, if you wanna use the town property, you have to get general liability. Present us the, the insurance and then you can use it. But where the town doesn't have any financial responsibility. It's the problem that I have with it is, you know, usually it's a lot of reimbursements that, you know, they come to me after whatever's been purchased and. You know, it's technically their mon, it's their money, but once it crosses ours, it's town money and it just kind of gets.
Sure.
And it's very small too, in this instance, the farmers market. It's just a lot of added work and. I know, uh, the, uh, Teresa's been asking me for, just, just to ease things up a little bit, but.
No, I totally understand what you're coming from, Hazel, would you?
Yeah, so you wanna separate them from our finances, they wanna be separated from your finances, why don't we put it on next time's agenda? Actually, we can review the ordinance and make a decision to.
Yeah.
But we, we don't have enough, without looking at the ordinance, we're speculating on why those, why they're set up, so.
The point's me in the direction where I can reach out to make sure there's no big underlying insurance issues or anything.
So finally, ordinance, research the underlying insurance or other liability.
Yep.
Concerns and that's. Do we carry a separate policy for it then?
That's what I, no.
Um, are, are other towns, are, is this, is the, um, farmers market committee? Is it a committee or is it a separate entity? I mean, right now, because it's a committee, it's certainly within our responsibility.
Well, it's an appointed committee too. I can, I can research that, I'm not.
I, I think that all relates to the public park. That's my memory of that, so we'll follow up on that.
Yep.
Okay, that's good.
And that is it.
Great. Uh, board member reports.
Sometime we need to talk about, I suggest the general code services deal. I don't know how involved you guys have been in it prior to now, but it means, it, it, we need to know. What's in there and, and understand it and our plate was too full tonight.
Sure. Yep.
Maybe next time.
Noted.
Do we bring Chip in for that? I mean, in the past, we've come in a couple of times, but it's.
I think we've probably.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, other board members? Okay, um, public comments. See none. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Hello, all in favor? All right. Oh, yeah, excuse me, I need a second there. We needed a second. Sorry, thanks.